The council study session for the first of July, all of our council is present. The first item on our agenda for this meeting is to review the items on tonight's council meeting and agenda and the agenda for the July 8th meeting.
Mayor, is everyone frozen? They look frozen on my screen.
Uh, no, not on my screen. Mr. Freeman's got his portrait up, but I see signs of life from everyone.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. So, council, the July, the first council meeting that will take place immediately after this one, currently we have off of the consent agenda, a annexation case. I know we reviewed this agenda on Thursday. Any questions or any additional information you'd like on anything for the agenda tonight? Seeing none? Okay, how about for the July 8th meeting?
Mayor, mayor.
Yes. Mr. Brady?
I think we had been requested to give a presentation on 5B.
I was just looking to say that.
Oh, sorry, yeah, so Nana's here, he has a brief presentation. I don't think we-
Okay.
This had just come through P and Z.
Wednesday before-
Wednesday, so we didn't have a chance to really brief council on it, but he's here. If you don't mind, he can give a brief presentation on-
No, yeah, I recall now that you mentioned that because this had just come through planning and zoning, it would be good for us to hear this, so, yeah, please proceed, Nana.
All right.
Mayor, council, so this project before you is called Mountain Vista. It's 81.4 acre master plan development. As you can see on your screen, it's actually located west of Signal Butte, south of Southern Avenue, and north of Hampton Avenue. The general plan designation is mixed-use activity, and the main goals or the purpose for the mixed-use activities to create large areas that are very, very vibrant. That includes mix of uses, basically your commercial uses, your office uses, and sometimes it does also include residential. The residential is mostly kind of ancillary or secondary to really support the commercial uses to create that vibrant community. So the zoning designation on the property right now is limited commercial with a PAD overlay that was approved to basically allow modification to certain standards within the limited commercial. The current rezoning request is basically to rezone a certain portion of the property that is currently zoned limited commercial to allow substantial part of residential, high, medium, high to medium residential within the development. And this was very critical, so there was extensive discussion between economic development planning and our litigant department with the applicant, because as we've been having this continual discussion with council and with the planning and zoning board, that we want to very much continue to preserve and protect our commercial designated areas from it being converted to residential. So when this project came in, staff had a major issue, but through various deliberations with the applicant and all the parties involved, we were able to come to a resolution, and as I continue the presentation, I'll show you how we were able to come to a resolution that at the end of the day, the development will still be able to achieve the goals that are intended for the mixed-use, that mixed-use activity district. So this is the overall master plan that is being before you tonight, and there are four parcels, as you can see here, parcel A, B, C, and F2. Those four parcels, actually, you'll be approving a specific site plan for the proposed development. There are other four parcels that right now, what they are asking for is conceptual site plans, and what that means is they are getting the uses allowed, they are getting the design teams on the properties overall, they are providing overall design team to make sure that there is synergy, there is coordination between various development within the master plan area, and they also have infrastructure that is very comprehensive to really be laid out throughout the whole development as well. So as part of the review, one of the discussions that we had with the applicant is this is supposed to be a master plan, so they needed to come up with a design that is comprehensive and that encompasses the whole site, and not come in and piecemeal the development. So through that, the applicant was able to provide a master design guidelines that was reviewed extensively by staff and the design review board as well, and the design review board was very pleased with the overall design, so they are recommending to you, council, to approve that as part of the master plan development. Also, as part of the proposal, one of the things that we also discussed with the applicant extensively is how the whole development is going to basically link to each other, create a synergy, and one of them was to have a comprehensive pedestrian circulation plan that shows how people can move from the commercial areas, and those residents can also move freely bike and be able to just access various parts of the whole master plan development without any impediment. So this is the circulation master plan that you'll be approving tonight as part of the master plan. So parcel A is very critical to this development, and parcel A is a parcel that is very adjacent to Signal Butte. This is parcel A. I'm going to show you the specific site plan. So this is a specific site plan that took a while for us to come to a resolution with the applicant. We wanted to make sure that parcel A, which is going to include a hotel, a fitness center, number of restaurants, and then a shop, we wanted to make sure that it's not isolated from, from the overall development, it needed to be incorporated into the development. So some of the things that we did was the drive-throughs that are being proposed on the site were supposed to be all, we required them to be internal instead of it being outside where it creates that kind of suburbia development. And so if you look on this site plan, all the drive-throughs are internal. One of the major discussions that we also had was to make sure that some of the buildings, the drive-through restaurants are pushed closer to the street to kind of create that kind of street engagement, and also include certain form of outdoor seating like patios, which we are basically asking the council to approve this site plan that the applicant will not be able to modify the site plan. If they want to, they will have to go through the public hearing process, because this was very much, it took a lot of discussions, and the applicant really agreed to that, so we wanted to make sure that they are logged in to develop it according to what is being shown to you tonight. So again, as part of the design review, the applicant provided various elevations, and they have specific criteria that if it's going to be developed according to a type, then there are certain basic minimum materials and kind of materials and design that goes into the building, and their design guidelines, actually, I see that the design guidelines that council approved last November, so overall, they are really providing superior design that if it's followed, they will really create superior development in that location. And you're looking at parcel B, which is a multi-residence, this is the elevations that they will be following or will be designing it to, which is modern, they call this modern warm. So basically, you have different elevations, you have different variations in color, that is really a key component of the proposal. This is parcel C, these are the elevations, how it will be developed, and I want to add that each of this development has its own amenities. It's got, you know, their fitness center, swimming pool, that basically it can be self-sustaining as well. And this is parcel F2, which is, also shows the elevations that will be developed. So as I said earlier on, as the proposal came in, we wanted to make sure that overall the development will meet the mixed-use activity goals, and also how we were going to make sure that there is no future demand or request to come back and convert the remaining limited commercial, which is parcel D2 and D1, to residential, because that is very common that we experience all the time whilst, as soon as we get a commercially designated area being converted to residential, we get a follow-up to convert the remaining. So we wanted to make sure that if that happens, that will basically degrade the intent of the mixed-use activity. So through that various discussion, staff and I'll pass on to Veronica to just explain further, we were able to come to a development agreement that is going to tie some of the parcels to ensure that the goals of the mixed-use activity center is withheld. Veronica wants to give details of that.
Good afternoon, mayor, council members. So the requirements of the development agreement, as Dr. Apia had noted, is they will, really are striving to preserve the non-residential type uses on, on the, within the property. So on parcels A and F1, there will be no residential development at all. Parcells A, D1, and F1 will be prohibited from rezoning to a non-residential, I'm sorry, pardon me, to a residential zoning classification for the term of the development agreement, which will be 20 years. And then, prior to any permits, vertical, permits for vertical construction for any of the multi-residence parcels, onsite water and sewer main lines will have to be completed and accepted by the city, again, to ensure that we have that base that will allow for some future commercial development. And then finally, on that parcel A, which is the parcel that is at that corner of the US 60 and Signal Butte Road, we have limited the number of drive-through restaurants to four, and it is subject to the site plan that you are going to be looking at today with this development.
Mayor, council, so the planning and, planning and zoning board, actually, we had a brief discussion with them on the development agreement, and just to add to that, they were very pleased because their concern in the past have been conversion of this resi, um, commercial areas to residential, but they were pleased with the development agreement, the restrictions on certain parcels that they will not be converted to residential for this substantial number of years, and also keeping the parcel D2 and D1, which is limited commercial, will be required to develop to a certain percentage of commercial and residential. So they believe that overall, when you look at all this comprehensively with a development agreement, it helps to achieve the goals that are intended to be developed within the mixed-use activity district. So in summary, staff believe that with the development agreement, with the elevations and with the site plan restrictions and everything that has been presented to you, that the proposal is consistent with the general plan, the zoning ordinance and staff is recommending approval. The planning and zoning board also reviewed and recommended approval with a vote of 7-0 as well. That concludes my presentation, I'll stand for questions.
Okay, thank you, Nana. Mr. Thompson?
Well, not really a question, Nana, but, but a big thank you to you and staff, and also to the zoning attorneys and the developers, everyone involved in this. I know this, this started a year ago, it wasn't the easiest to get to where we are today, but I think this is a, this is going to be a quality, a quality product that I believe the citizens will be proud of. It's a massive piece of land, it's really kind of the gateway entry into Mesa from the, from the east, you know, land that we own, or that's already annexed into Mesa. And so we wanted to make sure that it was, it was really that, that gateway, and, you know, it, it took some master planning on a piece of property this big. I think there was four different properties, or developers, three different zoning attorneys, and to bring everyone together, really, at one time, and master plan this entire site and, and build the vision, and get everyone to agree and stay together, especially preserving the employment, was tremendous. And I think, I want to say thank you to you and Christine and, and everyone involved, and then to the zoning attorneys and the developers as well, as, you know, for hanging in there, and I think we're going to have a really, really good product as a result.
Thank you. Council, any other questions or comments on this item? All right, so that was, that will remain on the consent agenda for tonight's meeting. Any, council, any other questions or comments on the agenda for tonight's meeting? Mr. Brady, anything else that staff would like to say about the agenda for tonight?
No, mayor, I think we've covered it, thank you.
Okay. Moving on then to the agenda for the January the 8th council meeting, a week from tonight. Much like tonight, there's, it looks like there's just one item off of the consent, which is, well, related to a general planned amendment and an annexation, some zoning matters. Mr. Brady, does staff have any presentations or any information you'd like to share for anything on the agenda for next week?
Mayor, I think the only one I want to really draw your attention, the ones at the end you were briefed on, when was that, a week or so, oh, last, last week, on the destination gateway, the car dealership, so we talked about those. Just draw, I just want to bring your attention to the, also the discussion you had with staff on the City of Mesa five-year consolidated plan, that's also 5D. So some of those items we talked about a week ago, where now you'll see them now on July 8th. But I believe, I think we've covered all of those in previous study sessions, mayor, so I think we're fine unless there's some follow-up questions.
Mr. Freeman?
Yeah, I, did I say July 8th, we're going to appoint a presiding magistrate for our city court?
That is correct.
Yes, and I, I think you, hopefully, the council got the memo that there was one applicant for that position, that if you would like, we're, rather than convening an executive session and interviewing the individual, we're inviting council members to indicate if you'd like to, to, to meet with Judge Tatts and, and ask him any questions that, to confirm, you know, your readiness to vote for that a week from tonight. I think we're familiar with Judge Tatts, he's been on, up the bench for several years, been very active in the community court programs.
Mayor, if I could, I'll just add that I had the opportunity to go to city court and see him in operation and the staff and all the things that they were doing, and I, I was really quite impressed handling all the very responsibilities they have, you know, from homelessness to making needs of the citations that they have to go through. So, yeah, I, I like that, I'm glad that he's the applicant, and I'll be willing to vote for that approval next week.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. I had a similar experience attending the community court on a couple occasions, it's, it's very impressive, I'd invite the public, actually, to, to, to go and, and see what a good job everybody does, working together for, you know, to assist the folks that are the litigants that are there. Even more impressive, I think, is the pre-trial or the, the meetings beforehand, where the social workers and prosecutors get together and talk about what they can do to, to improve the lives of the people that are in the court, so it's an impressive program. Okay, yes, I'm sorry, Councilmember Duff.
Yes, on the July 8th, on 5F, there is a road improvement from Southern Avenue and Stapley Drive, and Southern, along Southern, and I just wanted to advocate that we make sure that we have adequate bike pedestrian paths, that she gave best stops in the rework of that area. It's a, we have a high pedestrian and bike use through there, and I just wanted to make sure any rework of the road accommodates that transit.
Okay, I'll- Thank you, Mr. Brady, you have anything to say on that?
Mr. RJ or Beth, I want to be, I want to be careful, I'm not sure how, what this, scope of this work includes. It looks like it includes new curbs and gutters, so I don't know, does it include a-
Well, we are adding mediums on every leg, a third southbound lane from the Southern and Stapley to the US 60, and a dedicated eastbound right, sidewalks, stormdrain sidewalks. I do not see the bike lanes on this list.
Mayor, Councilmember Duff, we'll have to take a look at the plans just to confirm, I don't, I don't want to misstate what the scope of the work is.
This is, in order to provide additional lanes, we've got, this is a-
It's a safety project.
Safety, safety project, it's one of our higher-
It's our highest accident location in the city.
We're trying to accommodate that, so I don't know if we have, how much room we have for, do we have a bike path in that area?
We just need to pull the plans and check.
We'll have to get back to you on that.
Yeah, I'd love to see the design on that when it's appropriate.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council, anything else on next week's agenda that you'd like additional information on? Okay, thank you, Mr. Brady, anything else staff would like to share on next week's agenda?
No, mayor, I think we have covered the items in previous discussions. I will make note that on items 9D and 9E, it will require five votes for approval.
Okay. You say 9D and 9E?
Did I get that right? Hold on, oh, is it 10? Sorry, I'm looking, sorry, mayor, 10D and 10E.
All right, got it. So council, make sure that you're comfortable with 10D and 10E in particular.
I have one question.
Yes, Jeremy?
What's the reason for that, Chris? I'm just curious, is that like some kind of special amendment or something?
I'll let the city attorney can explain that.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, it's because the state statute actually makes it explicit, and there's a few statutes like this, and this is one of them that requires a two-thirds vote.
Okay, thanks.
All right, council and staff, if there's nothing else, we'll move on to the next agenda item for this meeting, that's item two, to hear a presentation and provide direction on the proposed audit plan for fiscal year 2020, 2021. Welcome our auditor, Joe Listano. Joe?
All right, thank you, mayor and council. What I'd like to do is just go over, do a brief presentation of the proposed audit plan for next year. Starting with, we're going to go over the current work that we have in progress, our audits planned for next year, any follow-up audits we plan for next year, and then the other activities that our office does, which are considered non-audit services. So first, our current work in progress, we have the fire and medical departments, the transport services, and billing. So this, we are looking to ensure that all eligible costs are recovered, the billing services meet contract terms, and all other financial risks are mitigated. The next two, engineering CMAR projects and engineering CIP Mesa, work together a little bit, they're both projects designed to look at the process and make sure that they're done in accordance with established criteria and that the controls are effective to prevent errors, fraud, waste, or abuse. And then the CIP Mesa system is what engineering uses to track their projects and use for their documentation, so we're looking at, at that to ensure that they're following their, their established criteria. And then the last one in progress is the police photo safety program, and we are looking at the financial impact of the program, along with how the revenues are used, and if the, the established objectives are being met. Then our new audits for next year, starting with, the first three are carryover audits, so these are audits that were on our plan for, from last year, but we did not get to them. So the first is the business services and purchase division, we're looking at the, whether effective controls are in place to prevent or detect errors, fraud, waste, or abuse, and ensure compliance with policy statutes and other applicable requirements. The next one is Department of Innovation and Technology, their software and application management, and so we're just looking to make sure that applications used by the various city departments are licensed, inventoried, and meet the city's IT security standards. And then the third is with engineering also, and it's their job order contracting process, and we're looking to make sure that their job order contracts are administered in accordance with the established criteria and controls are effective to prevent errors, fraud, waste, or abuse. And then the new audits are, the first is a police department badging and security access, and this is really more of a citywide look, but the police department is responsible for managing the, the process, and we're going to be looking at the building and suite access and how it's managed to make, to prevent unauthorized access to city facilities. Falcon Field leases, this will be looking at hanger leases and land leases to ensure revenues are accurately calculated, recorded, and collected, and controls are in place to prevent fraud, waste, or abuse. And also along with this, there are some policies and statutes that go along with the, the leases, and we'll be looking at those to make sure they're meeting those requirements. And then the last audit is the fleet parts management, and we're going to be looking at the controls over parts management to prevent or detect errors, fraud, waste, or And we'll also be performing follow-up reviews on the audits that we completed this year, and those are police jail services contract, convention center revenues with parks, recreation, and community facilities, the claims administration contract with HR employee benefits, and the transient lodging tax audit that we just completed. So typically, what we do with these audits is, after a year, we come in and look at what work has been done to implement the recommendations that were in the report that we issued. And then our other activities, which for our audit stands are considered non-audit services, we do citywide cash audits on a continuous basis. Now this year, I think that audit is going to look a little different than in past years, there's not a lot of cash collecting going on right now, we don't know where that's going to be, so we'll just have it on the plan, but we'll be monitoring it to see if we need to go in and do cash counts at those places that we collect cash, and we may focus more on the petty cash process or something this year, depending on, you know, kind of when everything is back in full mode. The PCI DSS annual review is a credit card requirement that we look at the internal controls related to credit card handling, both on a security side and making sure that we're following the required processes. This is required through the banks that issue the devices and, you know, process our payments for us, they want to make sure that we're protecting customer security, so we do this annually. We just do a piece of it, we focus more on the operational side, so we look at the physical devices and make sure employees are completing required training and things like that. Department of Innovation and Technology also handles a big chunk of this, and they really do the, the brunt of the work. We also handle any calls or email requests that we receive through our fraud and ethics hotline, we conduct investigations to ensure that the city is following all its necessary processes, and any ethics or fraud issues are being appropriately handled. And we also offer, also offer consulting services for departments if they need assistance on putting in internal controls or want to do a financial review, or maybe are putting in a new process and want to make sure that they're putting in effective controls so that the process is followed. And then lastly, we, if we get any unscheduled audits, we will add those to the plan if requested by the city manager or city council. Any questions or changes?
Thank you, Joe. Council- Council, any questions regarding this presentation?
Mayor, we should also mention that this has gone to the Audit and Finance Committee last week.
Last week, yeah. And I know I've been briefed, I think council has been briefed individually and asked if we have input on the plan, so I think we're all pretty familiar with this presentation. Council, any, any questions for Joe? All right, I think this is to provide direction on the proposed audit plan. I assume we can do that by consensus. Is there a nodding of heads? Or Mr. Smith, is there a need for a roll call vote on this item?
Maybe just do a voice vote on this, just so that it's clear that you-
Okay, thank you. So council, would you please unmute your microphones? Is there a motion in favor of adopting the proposed audit plan for fiscal 2021? Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Freeman. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Are there any opposed? All right, thank you. That passes unanimously. Thank you, Joe, for your, for your work on that audit plan. We'll look forward to hearing more as that's developed. The next item on our agenda for this meeting is item three, that's the current event summary and reports on meetings and conferences attended. Council, I know we've been all hunkering down in response to the virus a little bit, the last little bit. Is there anything that you'd like to share with us, events you've been participating in? Yes, Councilmember Duff?
Of course. Last week on Thursday, I had an event by Zoom called Community Conversations, which I invited constituents to talk about anything at large. And we're, it was a great conversation, and we're continuing it again this week, tomorrow at 2:00. Also, on Friday, you, Mayor, and me, and as well as the Mesa Leadership Class, we did a ribbon cutting at Positiv Cristo on the landscaping that the Mesa Leadership Class of 2020 raised funds to redo the landscaping out front. It was an area where a lot of people were just hanging out, and now it's beautifully landscaped in a way that doesn't invite, you know, the loitering. It's very well done, and they were able to raise enough funds to also contribute $5,000 to Positiv Cristo. So I want to acknowledge them and the work that they have done to really beautify Positiv Cristo. There's a lot of beautiful things going on in Positiv Cristo, and now the outside with the new paint and the new landscaping is reflecting that beauty. So I appreciate their work. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Duff. It was a pleasure to join you at that event. It's good to see PAZ is, even during the COVID epidemic, is doing such good work, and I was pleased to join you later that day as well on a Zoom call as we bid farewell to Arlen Westling, the longtime CEO of PAZ, who really, our whole city owes him a debt of gratitude. It did a wonderful job in, in really turning that into a very strong and very integral part of our community. So it was, I appreciated the chance to be with you on that. Mr. Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. I had the opportunity to participate in the National League of Cities, a large city conference call this past week, and it was about the Federal CARES Act, the monies received by the different communities. And I can tell you, by listening to almost all the large cities in the United States, we are well far above getting the monies out into our community and the different venues that we're able to do that. So kudos to staff and Mesa Chamber and, and all the organizations that are working hard to get monies out to our businesses, because some of these large cities are really struggling. And, and we have different platforms to deliver that, and I know we're going to be revisiting those platforms in the future, but it was, I could tell you, we're heads above the pack. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman, and amen to that. I'm proud of the way our cities responded to the CARES Act money. Mr. Thompson and then Mr. Luna.
Yeah, I just wanted to say congratulations to Councilmember Haredia. Saw his name on the Valley Metro Board of Directors, so he's going to be a great representative for the city of Mesa, so Frankie, congratulations.
We're proud of you. Mr. Luna, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Hopefully you can hear me okay. On Thursday, I participated in a coffee talk with A New Leaf and members of A New Leaf, as well as supporters, to talk about the CARES funding in the city of Mesa and how it's bolstering many of those community members that are in need. Thursday, I had a Spanish discussion on Mason Español, mirroring what you did as far as a small business technical assistance. And, but I do want to thank Natalia from Economic Development, as well as Frankie Joe from Ace Valley's Fannick Chamber of Commerce. I also participated in an NLC constituency group president's meeting and represented, of course, Hilo at the national level, and we spoke on issues related to what's happening with the pandemic, as well as with some of the demonstrations that we've, we've seen at a national level. Yesterday, I attended a briefing with Malayo on the impact of COVID-19 on the Latino community, and just keeping busy doing a lot of great stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. I'm glad you mentioned the webinar on the technical assistance, small business assistance program. That is still up. Jay, Jay did a great job explaining the details of that. During the course of that presentation, I had to say to her, this sounds too good to be true, because there really is so much that's available for the small businesses in the city of Mesa. So I think we need to take every opportunity we can to remind people, if you, if you own a small business in the city, please check out the technical assistance program. I think, I can't imagine that there's a business out there that wouldn't benefit from it. Council, anything else you'd like to share under this item? All right, seeing none. Mr. Brady, can you help us with the schedule of future meetings?
Yeah, it's pretty simple, Mayor. We just have one more meeting till the break, so we'll see you next Wednesday. We will need to have a little bit earlier start time. We have a presentation on the Eco Mesa Project, proposed development downtown, and we have another executive session. So we're going to start at 4:45 next Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you. Then, council, the next item on our agenda is to convene an executive session regarding the Laney Suite lawsuit. Is there a motion to convene an executive session? Thank you, Mr. Thompson, seconded by Mr. Luna. We will do a roll call vote. Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Whitaker?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Haredia?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Duff?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Luna?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Thompson?
Aye.
Thank you, and I vote aye as well, so that motion passes. We will now close out our Zoom meeting, and then we will convene an executive session via the telephone.